As we just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The board's purpose, the board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal preoccupation. Diversity in viewpoints and sufficient understanding of issues. Strategic leadership more than administrative detail. Clear discussion of board and chief executive roles. Collective rather than individual decisions. Future rather than past or present and pro acts that be rather clearly actively.
Johnson.
Bowen.
Here.
Sharon.
Smith.
Bitovich.
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Do you want to add anything to the agenda?
Oh, I want to add something.
So you're not seconded, so you can do so.
I'd like to add that we add to the agenda that we have attorney present at our board meetings. I guess not really an invite until we feel that maybe we don't need it, but I would request. Sorry, you know.
Exactly. I would say board development is appropriate. Second. A discussion.
Well, we have discussion around reins and what we spent on three of all that.
Yeah, talk about that during the slide. A vote please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen. Sharon. Smith. Bitovich.
Aye.
I said now.
Now we know me.
Yeah, I move we approve the amended agendas. Second. There it is.
Okay, in the vote, Johnson.
Aye.
Bowen. Sharon. Smith. Bitovich.
Aye. Public comments. I've got a lot to read before guidelines. We have people tonight. We do, okay, awesome. And you're going to be the timekeeper again, thank you, or what is it, three minutes? Three minutes. For still low tech, for being a tech school. Public participation at school board meetings during times of general public comment at a regular meeting. Comments and questions may deal with any topic related to the board's contact of schools. Comments at special meetings must be related to the call of the meeting. During times of public comment on specific agenda items, comments shall be confined to the topic of the agenda item being considered by the board. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. The board encourages the discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted in executive session. Time limit for speakers, comments from the audience are limited to three minutes per speaker with no immediate response from the board except when deemed necessary by the board president. A single spokesperson should be selected by groups or organizations desiring to press the board on agenda topics in order to avoid presenting repetitious information. When there is a large number of speakers we heard, the presiding officer may shorten the time for each individual speaker and may limit the amount of time for all speakers. Orderly conduct or public comments, the meetings are not public forum meetings, they are meetings held in public. All meetings except executive sessions will be open public meetings. Orderly conduct of meetings does not permit spontaneous discussion from the audience. Speakers will be recognized by the board president and may make objective comments on school operations and programs. The board will not permit in public session any expression of personal complaint about school personnel, nor against any person connected with the school system. During the time allocated for public comments, persons may speak on any established policy or other matters under consideration by the board except for personnel matters or complaints concerning specific employees or students. The discussion of all personnel matters will to be conducted in executive session. Speakers will not be permitted to participate in gossip, make inflammatory remarks, use abusive or vulgar language. Speakers will be advised that their comments must be limited to items that relate directly to the district. The board president will maintain the prerogative to discontinue any presentation which violates the public participation guidelines. Did I do that? I didn't know if I had three minutes? Goodness, okay, so thank you for adhering to that. We are Manitou, we are not going to sink to a level of some of the other current districts and such. We are going to be considerate, we are going to be honest, we are going to be open and we are going to be respectful. First one is biologons. And yeah, we're using this table.
All right, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd like to share the letter that I sent to the Pike's Peak Journal and I'm mixing in some other thoughts as well. Wise person said that a story known is only through the story told. I also once read that stories bring us together, they're shared knowledge, shared legend, shared history, and often they share, they shape our shared future. There've been many questions asked by concerned people about staff leaving the district and the reason why. While just a few have shared their stories, many have not, and I'm glad to see more people sharing their reason for leaving. Because it's only through sharing that we can see the entire picture, learn from those stories, and ensure the best for our students, teachers, and community. Through my 33 years, there've been a lot of changes and some have been quite challenging, especially in the last few years, but I feel they've taught us many lessons that will lead to better education for our students in the future. When I think of all those challenges for teachers and for our district, I strongly believe that the safety of our students was always first when making decisions. I am one of the people leaving. And it was the hardest decision I had made. Manitou has been and is one of the best parts of my life. I've always been felt supported by the administration at all levels. And I believe that Elizabeth and Eric and Dustin and Aria have always looked at what's best for students and our teachers. If I could work another 33, I would. I want to stress that even though there's several people leaving the middle school, middle school is strong. Dustin and Aria are a team that cares about the students and the teachers in that building. They deserve to be celebrated and supported as they move on. I've talked to each person not returning to the middle school. And their leaving includes a variety of reasons, however, none were because of anything negative about their experience with Manitou, our district, or our administrators. So many great things are happening, they need to be celebrated. So many master teachers in our district and they need to be celebrated. So many amazing administrators and they too need to be celebrated. Manitou has always been about the whole child and that's never changed. Let's celebrate that as well. Let's support our district and the many people who work tirelessly to ensure that our students have every possible opportunity for success. I don't discount anyone's experience, but let's work together to find solutions for our challenges. It's always been a collaborative effort for our students and that should continue. I'm hoping for ethical practices by all.
Second.
I'm hoping for celebrations of those who do the right things for our students and their safety. I'm hoping for people who can see positive things happening in this district and support moving our district from great to greater. I want to thank you all who do the best for our district, who are willing to look at all sides so we can learn, grow, and change for the better. And I want to thank you for a great 33 years. I've always been proud.
Cory Urban. Good evening, my name is Cory Urban and I am the sixth grade math teacher at Manitou Middle School. I'm also a proud alumni of Manitou Elementary, Manitou Middle, and Manitou High School. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude for an administration that on a daily basis makes me feel supported, challenged, and appreciated. I'm consistently encouraged to try new things as well as given the grace to fail and try again. In our classrooms, teachers strive to create a culture of trust where all students are challenged to do their best, be their best, and expect the best of themselves. I'm extraordinarily grateful to work in a district that holds those same values for their staff as well. My students directly benefit from the professional development and instructional leadership that I have received over the past three years. Very few things make me feel more supported than when the superintendent of Manitou Schools drops by my classroom simply because she is interested in the wonderful things that staff and students are participating in. Our principal Dustin Katie is a clear, consistent, and compassionate leader who works tirelessly to make sure that the students and staff at the middle school receive the best experience possible. I'm currently in the process of receiving my Colorado Principal's license and have had the opportunity over the past year to really dive into all the things that our district is doing right. To begin, the late start Wednesdays have been transformational in teachers' ability to collaborate as teams. Multi-tiered systems of support, which provides strategies for students in need of academic and behavioral help. And work done in our professional learning communities are two things that directly impacted teachers' ability to support students. Because of the dedicated time we received this year, the sixth grade team was able to identify the specific and unique needs of 20% of our students. The impact of these conversations cannot be overstated. The meetings were previously taking place during teacher plan times, this led to infrequency of meetings as well as less time to prepare a strong lesson. The needs of students are changing and dedicated PLC and MTSS times on late start Wednesdays have given teachers a powerful opportunity to support individuals who may have normally flown under the radar. I'd like to end by saying that I received an absolutely wonderful education as a student in Manitou. I was able to be an athlete, a musician, a thespian, and I always felt that my teachers were doing their best to help me grow and learn. However, just because Manitou has always been a wonderful place does not mean that we should become stagnant in the instruction that we are providing our students. The students of Manitou deserve a high quality and progressive education provided by staff who not only have high expectations for their students but for themselves. I for one could not be happier to work in a community where the administration understands the value of this and put specific systems in place for staff and students to be successful every day.
And next is Tim Barrett.
Cool. Yeah, I almost forgot. So. Blue rose, but I feel like I just want to, I'll just go with more off the cuff. So I'm a sixth grade social studies teacher over at Manitou Springs Middle School. And I am one of the people who is part of the turnover that has been discussed. I've heard it in newspapers, a lot of ambiguity surrounding this. I just feel like before I even go forward with it. I just want to say I have so much gratitude for the people who've been around me this entire process. They're incredible teachers at Manitou Springs Middle School. There are teachers who. If my, if my door is open daily, I will have a teacher come in, just ask me how I'm doing, have a conversation, right? That's community, that's what we're trying to build here. But it doesn't just extend to the wonderful teachers that I work with, administrators, right? I've never had anybody above me in my career that I felt comfortable leaving my door open. And if the head of our school district walks by, I could just be like, hey, can I just give you an idea off you? And Elizabeth will stop and she'll talk. It's incredible, it really is, and I think sometimes we lose sight that in order to build great things, we have to build a solid foundation first. And right now it feels like we're in the foundation building period. We have a lot of great administrators who I can say as a new teacher, I felt more supported in the building than I think even some of our older teachers. And that's because when I came in, I think there was a narrow focus on ensuring that the new people in our building were taken care of. Unfortunately, I would say the, the issues with Colorado education in general are what's pushing me up. The rise in inflation, my inability to be able to make ends meet, it's incredibly difficult. On a daily basis, I have to think of the students that I'm saying goodbye to. And it's not because I want to, it's because I'm forced out of it. So yeah, aside from that, it's truly my reason for being here is just to say thank you and I appreciate everything.
Brenda Taylor, statue.
To the board, thank you all for your time volunteering to serve on the Manitou Springs School District Board of Education. I am here representing Stand Up for Manitou. We are a group of over 50 families looking for answers. We love Manitou and with the board, we want to make it the best experience it can be for students and families. Our group wants to apologize to many of the staff for setting in too late, it's past time to take action. We have more than 60 administrators, teachers, and staff who have left in the 2021, 2022 school year. This is an unprecedented rate of departure unacceptable for a district of this size. Are we losing what is most special and unique to Manitou in the process? Are we losing what makes this district our district, the choice district, the district that often the teachers have themselves attended? Is the high turnover, a lack of listening, a lack of support, a lack of true understanding? We as a community need to take notice and ask questions. How are the teachers valued? Is the process of evaluation designed for teacher success for guidance? Do not leave teachers feeling like failures. Some before were acclaimed for their skills are now finding themselves labeled as need for improvement. Evaluation should guide, not demoralize. Staff obviously have had very different experiences depending on where they were. We have repeatedly heard some saying they were micromanaged, scared to share feelings, feelings of retaliation, no work-life balance, feelings of being never enough, an unhealthy culture, manipulation. This has been heard from multiple long-term, very valued employees. Any organization would need to pause and ask serious questions. District leadership should serve and support the teachers and building staff. Are our district leaders learning from the system that is and was Manitou, observing, listening, learning from the culture? To find ways to support while also offering suggestions for improvement or is data being used to justify? Are we losing what is most special and unique to Manitou in this process? Manitou's devotees are leaving. How do we find new staff that can do Manitou? How does one teach, model, and mentor when the mentors? We are asking for better listening and understanding around the departures. We submitted questions to the Board of Education last month, we have not been given a formal response. Currently, we feel the need to specifically focus on confidential exit interviews and staff surveys. Reinvigorating the use of integration of the arts to support and develop the whole child and academic abilities. Research what is happening in the district, learn from the present and former staff, promise confidentiality. Together, we are engaging, asking questions, and seeking to understand. We reverse the trend of those leaving and support those who have chosen to stay.
Let's make out this Kimberly Spraggans.
My name is Kimberly and I had two children graduate from D14 and currently have a freshman at high school. I attended and spoke at a last board meeting. I am still concerned about the future of our district, how decisions are being made. What are we doing to better understand why 60-plus staff are leaving just this year? Does leadership play a role in driving them away? We have lost five principals in four years. Stand up for Manitou, a group of parents, teachers, and community members who are engaging, asking questions, seeking solutions to better the district. Submitted questions at April 18th meeting that represented consensus of what concerned families are seeking to understand. Have we been provided answers to those questions yet? The district has established a path of artificially seeking input by simply doing what it wants. On 4/28, the superintendent in the Pike's Peak Politeon stated higher education teacher preparation programs are also declining. And quote, focusing on positivity does not mean that we should not discuss important topics like staff retention. On May 6, a recent announcement, RE, the building leadership at high school, the superintendent was also quoted saying, I had determined that we are fortunate to have qualified teachers in our own school district who are able to make these important leadership roles. Deciding on an interim principal and assistant principal is yet another example of parents, teachers, and the community being shut out of decision-making. Not that I have any, who we have chosen is very suitable, it's just that. It seems that our superintendent is seemingly handling dismantling the district we love and to link her own. A recent article in the school newspaper states that beloved 17-year-old Alice Stoneback is leading the district to pursue administrative role in District 20. Was she provided the opportunities in Manitou or did she simply get overlooked, pushed out for candidates, handpicked by our super? Maybe this is why we're losing some of it. Instead of guessing at the reason for so much turnover, why don't we research the answers by enlisting a third party to perform exit interviews and staff surveying? We can only learn from this information. I feel there is a big secret, a truth that we will go away, that we aren't qualified to handle or able to handle the truth. So decisions are being made without the parents or community involvement. Why was appointing the interns to lead the high school such a rush? We had three weeks posted, no parent panel. We could have used the summer to continue the search, but this was the superintendent's own decision. Shouldn't we try to maybe keep some that are leaving and how can we trust you when we can't answer honest answers? All the changes impact our kids, constant turnover, constant change in a time we are needing stability. I did make copies for all of you, I will leave them for you.
And send agenda. A vote. Johnson.
Aye.
Bowen. Sharon. Smith. Bitovich.
Aye.
All right, I'm just going to pull up the PowerPoint and then if you guys have questions, we can talk about the actual document. So just a reminder of our timeline, we kind of go over this every ten, but last board meeting was when the DAC brought their salary compensation proposals to you guys. Today is the proposed budget and then we just have to have that done by May 31st. Then we will, based off of your feedback, I will bring back the adopted budget in June for you guys. Like we talked about earlier in the work session, contracts will be going out by Friday, hopefully at the latest unless we run into any issues, but Friday is our goal across that. This is kind of tough to see, but just a way of showing. Go back, oh no, go back to couple slides, yeah, that one, but if you could go towards the bottom, that's the most important part. We had a really good year with school finance this year. We talked about this a couple of board meetings ago when we were first getting some preliminary numbers, but the initial plan was to buy down that negative factor by 50% this year, 50% next year. They then came back and said, we can't quite afford that because of inflation and everything going on, so we're going to start decreasing it slightly and then decrease a little bit more, but eventually get to that point where we hopefully don't have that negative factor. So we are at the lowest point in the negative factor than we've been really since inception. For Manitou, it's, I mean, for the total negative factor, I mean, for Manitou's negative factor, it's just a little bit over half a million dollars. And you can see there in the per pupil funding that we brought that, that went up by about $560, it went up another dollar from last week to this week, so when it actually got finalized by legislation. But this is a good year, so I want to celebrate that, we're actually seeing a good increase, we haven't seen an increase like that for a long time, so we're moving in the right direction. But the problem with school finance for us right now in this situation is enrollment. I added this slide just today, just to kind of show what we start on, so there's a, there's a bunch of different numbers and we've gone through this a little bit, but I'm just going to run through quickly. As we start with membership, so membership's the actual physical bodies in our, in our schools. So I put last year's numbers and then where we're, or last October count, so this past October. And then where we're projecting for next year, where we're currently at really. So you can see we've had a little bit of a decline since October, that's not, that's not different than some years you get a big increase from October, some years it goes down. But that's not crazy, but I wanted to start with that because we're in school finance, they have us projected at a higher number, so we start there. Then we turn that into what's called FTE, or full-time equivalent, just like staff really. So that's getting it into a number, so that's taking out preschool, it's putting in the kindergarten, well, not kindergarten, it's fully funded, it wasn't used to be private. It's doing that little bit of math. And then, so then we go into FTE, but remember when you're declining enrollment, we get that opportunity to do the averaging. And I'm really thankful for that because if you look at those numbers, that 2018, 2019 year is really what's helping us right now. The enrollment that year was 1454, and so you get the best of current year FTE, two-year average, three-year average, four-year, five-year average. So for this, for next school year, we get that benefit of the five-year average. The thing that concerns me with that is next year, that 1454 is dropping off. So we're having that large number drop off our average. So with that average, it gets us to 1339, and then we add in some daycare and things like that to get us right under 1350. So to me, that's, as we're looking, moving forward, we need to have a targeted enrollment of at least 1350 to maintain funding. That's huge right now because we're going to, if we keep declining, then we're going to lose that, that large number in averaging. And if we increase, then we're just going to go with that flat number, so we need to increase to that right level. Does that make sense? So in this year, we're still benefiting from that, so that does help. So really, when I did the budget, even though we have that large number, we have 27 student decrease from October to what I'm projecting. It's really only a 10-student decrease funding-wise, so that's how membership moves over to funding, the averaging. So for, in the budget, we've talked about this, this was DAC's recommendations. So the first thing was focusing on classified staff, last year we focused on the certified staff, this year is to focus solely on classified. We did market research with our classified staff and found about 37 staff members that really needed just an increase for livable wages, number one, or number two, to make sure they're in line with their experience and time within their position. The second part was the overall increase, like we've always traditionally done at Manitou for all staff. Based on the budget and where we can go, and I'll get into that, I'm proposing 5% increase there. And then we had our health insurance increase that was totally shared by the employee and employer, we had it at 7.5%. It actually got reduced to about 6.9% because we moved some of our other things, voluntary and involuntary life insurance and a new short-term disability into the same United Healthcare platform, so kind of a bundling discount to get us to a 6.9% increase. And then we provided short-term disability, which is brand new to the school district, to all employees at the cost of the district. Significant budget changes. We have about a little bit over $100,000 in retirement and turnover savings. This one's tough to totally quantify right now because we have some vacant positions still. So I'm erring on the side of being super conservative with those. But that, that number could have increased, I don't, I don't see it decreasing at all, but we have a little bit of money from retirement and turnover. And what that means is this is the total salaries of the people leaving, this is the total salaries of the people coming in. A reduction of $213,000 for positions that will not be filled, this is two certified positions and four classified positions. And then with that, it's, I say it that way, but really one of those positions was worked into a new certified position, so that's offset by an increase of one certified position, which is 504 Coordinator for 612. And then there is increases like we're all seeing every single day in our utility costs, and that's really hitting us hard right now. Specifically natural gas, electricity, and water, and then our audit, our auditor that comes in every year, that increase is going, or that's going up because a lot of these go up, and then we were stuck in that single audit by getting all A lot of fees go up and then we were stuck in that single audit by getting all of that federal funding. Once you hit that threshold of 750,000, they have to do a side audit like they did last year, so they'll have to do that again. So it's an added fee that we cannot control. And then of course, the legal fees that we've discussed.
Can I ask about the reduction of staff? Was that just, you mentioned one was changed from certified by a coordinator. But the other ones, what they lost over attrition or?
The four classified are through attrition. The other one is a, it is a one-year only, so I have it.
It's an INR?
Nope, it's actually the interim, as we have the interim assistant principal, we're holding that.
Spot.
Instructional coach position at 612 level and not refilling it this year. So it's a one-year only.
Where the legal fees that is to the, I just printed out one page to the budget. Is that purchase services?
It is, yeah.
How much was that?
Where the total legal fees.
Or we can do it next meeting.
Yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head. Just.
Can we pause for one more? I'm sorry, there's a fire and I can see that. I just think that people will want to know that. It's. Let me call, that's okay. Is it closed?
Never made a motion to pause.
Yeah, we never, we just.
Yeah, so there's nothing to approve because we just, okay. Yeah, so. Can I just, are you, are you done? No, not quite. I took that little pause in looking into Jack's question about legal fees. Here today, we've had about $42,000 of legal fees. Last year, we had about $13,000. And then the year before, we had $42,000, so kind of. Because that, I remember, it's not unheard of, no.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for not putting that out politically.
No problem. I wanted to give a quick COP update because that's what a big part is, especially if you're looking at the actual board documents, I mean, the budget documents. It looks a little funky and this is because of COPs. So we received that $4 million of revenue in April. So that, if you look on the budget spreadsheet in the estimate for FY22, you'll see a huge $4 million increase to our revenue. So it makes it look like we exceeded our revenue budget so much this year. And that brings, that makes our ending fund balance for this year significantly high because we're not spending any of that money in this fiscal year. So going into, so we'll start next year with a high beginning fund balance. Next year, we'll pay our first annual debt service payment of $270,000. And then we'll transfer some of that money into capital reserve. So we do not know yet. We meet with the best board on Wednesday, so we don't know the results obviously best yet. If it's like last year, we found out pretty quickly after we presented where we ranked in overall. So we'll have a good idea, I would think probably by. The next board meeting for sure, if we are on the shortlist. We won't have official documentation till I think the end of June, but we should have a good idea at the next board meeting. And then can go planning there. So right now I just have a million dollars being transferred into capital reserve, so that's that big increase next year for the capital reserve transfer. But I don't know what that exactly looks like. And that's something we may have to change in a January revised budget once we know a little bit more. Fund balance, I just talked about this, it looks artificially high because of the COPs. But we did spend some money, I mean, we did come in lower than budgeted for expenditures, so that also helped push it up a little bit. But then next year, it looks like we're spending down our reserves quite a bit, $1.5 million. The majority of that is because of COPs for the next two years, but then you'll see it going out, it really doesn't impact it as much. So it's kind of this weird year because of these federal grants that we've received and the timing of spending the money, receiving the money, and then these COPs. So it's all timing-wise. But if you look down on that general fund summary at the very bottom, at the ending fund balance, you see the out years level out. They get us back to normal, normal levels, actually a little bit higher than budget. One thing I did want to say, and I forgot about this in the enrollment piece, is our enrollment is projected pretty low. And I think Tina said this in the work session, it is competitive out there right now with salary increases across the region. But that enrollment piece is a huge factor for us. So it's something that I want to continue to budget conservatively. And if we come back in October, when we get those official. October count official numbers in November, if we're coming out a lot higher than anticipated, that may be some point where I come to you guys and say that. We're looking a lot better than anticipated. And then if we want to do something with that at that point, I just don't want to commit and put the district in a level of ongoing expenditures. Let's see, does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense in this group. Two questions, so it looks like. So the student enrollment, obviously there's some stuff that can be done, there's some stuff that can't be done with that. And maybe it's a different discussion thoughts on that, but it looks like when FY19 drops out, if our numbers don't go up, that's gonna lower our average by probably 40 students. Because it's 200 students divided by five years.
Right now, we're sitting at, we looked at the numbers at 13 of five, but often times in July, August is where we know we have a lot more increase in enrollment in our elementary, it's. Children, especially community, I think first thing, so.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if you see the numbers, it's this trend and we've talked about this in meetings and it's not just here, it's this primary grace that we're really struggling with. And typically, we've seen it the other way where a senior class drops off and we have a higher class coming in. It's the opposite. We're losing large seniors graduating and not bringing in that kindergarten to replace it at that same level right now.
I just keep talking about, you know, 9% of our families in Manitou are parents of four. There are millions of kids in the United States. We have Airbnb and other vacation rentals throughout our community. So I, I think about these numbers all the time. It's a big deal.
It is. Get out of here, Gary.
And one last question. So last year, so that is a 5% increase for.
It does.
So that's great. And we did 4% last year, right?
Yes.
So 9% means we're almost in the ballpark with inflation.
And that's one thing that the question is gonna come out about inflation, like these numbers don't, aren't increasing the same rate as inflation. The School Finance Act increases every year by two factors, student enrollment and inflation. But this, the School Finance Act was introduced early on. So where we're seeing seven and a half percent inflation, that's not part of this. That counts for next year. So my hope is that we will see these numbers in next year's School Finance Act. The problem with the School Finance Act is that there is the negative factor, the budget stabilization factor. So they can run through all the math and say that we're gonna have this high number. And then if they can't afford it, then we have the budget stabilization factor increase again. And so it's kind of this catch 22. So I don't want to promise anything financially that's an ongoing expense. With the hopes that we're gonna get that inflation number next year when we know that they have that tool that.
Change this to an increased percentage in the school year would be announced in December-ish, so just, we'll pay attention to our October count very closely and try to. Try to do that when possible. So student enrollment matters for sure.
Sure does. All I have, the only thing I need is, if you guys don't have any other questions, I just need a approval or a motion to approve the proposed budget. So that we can get contracts out to staff this week. Can I get a motion?
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bitovich.
Hi.
Can I just also just kudos to Susie and our team and for, they were small but mighty. They've managed a lot of Esther dollars that have really complicated the budget aspect, so I just appreciate your expertise, your prudence and making sure that we're being responsible.
We need to adjourn for crisis management or do we want to pass filed through policy?
From my perspective, I think it's seven o'clock and we need to figure out what our families are gonna be doing tomorrow. So my recommendation at this point is that, because we may not be able to have school tomorrow, our bus bar is on one side. We need to get into some crisis response. I'll defer to the board on these matters, but we do have some significant work ahead to make sure our community is prepared for.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bowen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Bitovich.
Hi.
Seven of seven.
We'll keep you posted on what we do for school.